We just came back in from closed session. I'll ask our attorney to make comments.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the city council is in closed session this evening on public employee appointment, city manager. There's no reportable action out of that item. And the council will reconvene to closed session later this evening on items one and two.
Okay. Thank you. And we will open also at the same time our regular council meeting. If I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Ask for everyone to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the flag salute. And Jason, at that time, would I like for you to start us, please?
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to get up.
I was just reminded. Sorry, scouts. You were on vacation for the summer, so.
Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard post colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all his majesty and justice. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you, scout. Okay. Oh, okay. Liz, if you could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. First item is agenda approval additions and are any deletions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd request that item I, Warren B., drop from the agenda.
Okay, drop. Okay. Is that the only item we have? Okay. Hold the comment, please.
Under Government Code, section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. The request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker.
John Slatterback?
John Slatterback, I live in the city of Galt. There is an interesting phenomenon. Opposition to develop adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant has brought some residents together, and now those same residents question just about everything the city does. This council majority abolished the oversight committee, apparently to keep the citizens in the dark and ill-informed. Once this council eliminated the oversight committee, council then transferred four hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars from the residential sewer upgrade account to the developer sewer impact account. This was done on a special meeting night, wasn't televised, no media coverage, and few people in the audience. I've heard Ted Anderson say that this city has a standard to uphold and is held in check by the scrutiny of an audit. I was here the night the auditor stood at this podium, and he basically said, "It's not the job of an auditor to question the practice and procedures of how the city manages its accounts, but it's to see the numbers, that the numbers are correct and the numbers are compute to a balanced budget." In January two thousand eight, a tax order, task order was issued to West Joe's for four thousand nine hundred dollars to evaluate, evaluate the Slinkard report for raw wastewater exports of Sacramento region. This evaluation was paid for with residential sewer upgrade account funds. This expenditure was commingled with other, other funds and approved by council in a special meeting of January the eighth, on June the eighth, two thousand nine. I have a letter to that effect. Commingled with other funds. And it was paid for with the residential sewer upgrade account. That wasn't supposed to be, in two thousand eight, it wasn't supposed to be used for anything but to upgrade. But here they've commingled with it, with other funds, according to this email I have. Residents have been told by staff that the citizens of Galt are responsible for the upgrade to the sewer plant up to three MGD, and any and all homes built during and after that upgrade have zero responsibility up to the three MGD. This kind of mentality is what leads us, some of us, to question. Is there corruption in the city of, of Galt? At least bias in their decisions? Biosolids designs, West Joe's, hundred, I mean seventy-eight thousand dollars. Here, staff agrees fifty and fifty percent for residents. If they agree that there's fifty, fifty percent liability, then staff should agree that they have fifty percent liability for the three million dollar upgrade to the biosolids handling operation. Church property lease was paid with residential sewer, sewer rate monies. Why? This lease was developed so you continue to build homes. When I pay for something, I expect my money to be used for what I'm paying for. That paid for the leased property on the church property was all so you could develop more homes. I don't understand. I asked Greg about this when we had an oversight committee. He said, "Well, that needs to be corrected," and it never will be done unless something's been done about it. But he said that wasn't really right and it needed to be corrected. I would have thought it would have been corrected on this four hundred and some thousand. You just switched out of the upgrade account. Can council, or Ted Anderson, tell the citizens of Galt why the residential sewer upgrade account paid for West Joe's to evaluate the Slinkard report? I, I don't understand that and why the upgrade account paid for that. But according to my letter, our email I have, it was commingled and, and on this spreadsheet you got, it's in there somewhere, you just don't see it, it's not a line item. And I don't understand why that the upgrade account paid for that Slinkard report. If council could address that issue. There's other issues here on this spreadsheet that is questionable, and I don't understand why council that night voted for that with not any questions at all. It just doesn't make any sense. You, you had no questions at all on that. And it was four hundred and, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And there were no questions out of anybody. You done away with the oversight committee, and now we're in the dark and we don't know what you think. And, and there's something fishy going on in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slatterback.
Thank you.
Gary Tuttle?
My name's Gary Tuttle. I live outside the city limits, but I have a business inside the city limits. And I just wanted to come and thank publicly the people of Galt and the city, the shop local group, and the chamber of commerce for the support and help in our grand reopening of our business. We had a beautiful ceremony celebrating our country and the fact that we are finally able to reopen our restaurant. Barbara, I want to thank you for all your help especially in helping get, enlisting Rebecca Lawler to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and do the dedication to the flag. And then also for contacting Aiden Selby to sing the Star Spangled Banner. That was great. He did a great job on that. We appreciate Mike Singleton for DJing for us. And of course, he did country music because we are Gary's Country Deli. So that came off great. I want to thank Randy for his speaking there and the gift that he gave us. And appreciate that. We also appreciate Jason and Kurt coming by. And I know Kurt was just checking to see if I had a permit for the assembly, but, but we appreciate everything. And we also want to thank Mike, Mark Quackenbush, who is a Shriner clown who was there and did balloon things for the kids, swords and hats and all kinds of things. He even made a honeybee bracelet for Michelle so she could be the queen bee of the activities. So we just appreciate everybody and the time that they spent and, and helping us. So thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We wish you good luck in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dick Smith?
My name is Dick Smith. Before I get into my prepared statement, which is only one page long, I want to go back for, to nineteen ninety-four, when my wife and I moved up here. We were, looked around all the Sacramento area, and the reason we moved here was very simple. We found the house that we wanted. We liked the town. My son and his family live here. I now have a son, a daughter-in-law, two grandkids, and another daughter that live here in town, and they intend to go ahead and be here for a long time. I have an investment in this town. And let me go back just a little bit. When I got out of college in nineteen fifty, I went into the computer industry, and for the next thirty-nine years, I got moved all over the country. That's the way things were back then. I was out of a job a couple times because companies went out of business. But I survived. And in nineteen ninety-four, we moved up to Galt. One of the things that I realized in moving around the country, even trying to run for city council in a couple places, and I'm glad I didn't get elected, I realized there's an awful lot that goes onto towns, and a lot of it goes right down to the heart of the people that are there. I have an investment in this town. It's with my family here. And I've been accused in the past of being a developer, a builder, taking money under the table and everything else. And unfortunately, you people are completely wrong. The thing that I want to emphasize tonight is the fact that we have a major problem here, and I have not seen this very, happen very much around this country. We are being bombarded by people outside of our town. People who don't have the right to go ahead and tell us how to do our business. And consequently, I want to get into my prepared speech. And this is a response to Mr. Mike Eaton. A letter was sent by Mike Eaton dated August twelfth to our city clerk. Essentially, it asks for all correspondence, memos, and communications concerning political organizations like Protect Galt's Future, its members, individuals, and Brian Hildreth, the attorney for Galt, Protect Galt's Future. It required the material must go back to January first, two thousand and seven. This request covered things like the Delta Greens project, communications involving the Catholic Church property, and the Galt sphere of influence. Several months ago, a similar request was sent by Mike Eaton, asked council members to forward all their email Delta Greens correspondence. This request was honored, as there was nothing to hide. The latest request requires a lot of work, and part of the Galt staff and of the Galt legal expenses in order to respond to Mr. Eaton's letter. Further, correspondence is now between the Galt city attorney and Charity Kenyon of the legal firm of Kenyon and Yates. Charity Kenyon is the wife of Mike Eaton. We seriously doubt it cost Mike Eaton, while on the other hand, it costs the city resources and money. Shouldn't Mike Eaton be required to pay all the attorney fees incurred due to this request? I think so. These requests are intended to prevent Barbara Payne from voting on the Delta Greens project. This has been obvious for a long time. And let me go on. The whole thing stinks of McCarthyism. Many of you don't know what that is. This is a term that came into being in nineteen fifty due to Senator McCarthy's investigations. The dictionary defines it in the following manner. "The practice of making unfair allegations or using unfair investigative techniques, especially in order to restrict dissent or political criticism." This really is bad. Mr. Eaton, what gives you the right to interfere with Galt's internal affairs? You don't live here, nor do I believe, or we believe that you have any property in Galt. You live in a home at about eight and a half acres in the middle of the nature conservancy. What are you doing criticizing, irritating, imitating, and harassing various Galt people? Many of us in Galt are tired of your behavior and your obvious attempt to stop the Delta Greens project. I'm disgusted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, can I make a comment regarding Mr. Smith's statement? I know, I'm sorry, I just, there's just some things I can't let pass. And Mr. Smith made some comments about McCarthyism and outside interests, and I find, I find it rather interesting because you're talking about McCarthyism attacks, unfair attacks on individuals, yet Mr. Smith was behind those very same similar attacks on myself and Councilman Meredith, yet he, he, he seemed to think that was okay. And he's also overlooked the fact of the cost that his group, Protecting Galt's Future, has cost the city in our time with the city clerk with the recall and other issues that he's pushed as a result of his pushing this Delta Greens project. So he hasn't quite been upfront and honest about his claims. In fact, everything he's claiming about the other group is in fact what he himself and his group have been involved with. So I think it's very hypocritical for him to come up here and make the statements that he did. And I'll let that go at that.
Mr. Baldwin?
I was just going to say, next speaker.
Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin. I'm one of the concerned citizens of Galt, and it's a community of character, and it's getting stronger, I hope, and stronger every single day. I came up here tonight to give you an announcement. There's going to be a second diversity day, and that's a celebration of diversity. And we're going to have it at the high school in Galt, the old high school, on September twelfth, which is a Saturday. And it's from two to six. There's going to be great food, better than last year even, which is hard to believe, wonderful and exotic and intriguing entertainment, too. So I think you're going to love it. And it's been well planned. It's going to be right at the high school when you come off the freeway and you go down C Street and you turn right on Lincoln Way. It's, you'll hit the high school in a short time, and you get plenty of parking, plenty of food, lots of restrooms, lots of fun, lots of kids. I think you're just going to have a ball coming down there from two to four, September twelfth. And it's at the high school there. And I, I just can't imagine it being better than last year, but it's going to be wonderful. And I encourage you all to come down. If you can get involved, do that. If you can't, just enjoy it. And we're going to have some great food there this year, too. Last year, we had some exotic dancers, and they were really nice. And this year, I'm not sure if we're going to get them back. We're trying, we're trying. And just, just come down. It's going to be a fun day in Galt on September twelfth, between two and six at the high school. So thank you for, for letting me make this announcement. I appreciate it. And one more thing, I normally just say goodbye, but one comment was made tonight, and you know me, I try and put the city in a good light. As far as I know, in the many years that I've been coming, I have seen no corruption in this city council or councils previously. Now, there's been some disagreements, but I'll tell you, it's been a hard-working councils every single time, and this one here has been a real challenge, I grant you that. But it's just a matter of, you got to go with the flow, and there's no proof of any corruption, so there shouldn't be any accusations of any corruption, unless you've got proof. Just like Don says, just like Andrew says, when they were, I guess you could call it attacks or whatever, there is no corruption in Galt that I can tell or see or hear at all. It's a wonderful city, and if you get a chance, you might be able to move here. They've got some great homes. We've got a city manager, an assistant city manager that, that is all heart. He's just wonderful, both of them. And look out, Galt's getting on the positive side, so come on down, enjoy it, jump in the water. It's great. Thank you.
Al, before you leave, I just wanted to say that maybe we should clarify that. They, they weren't necessarily exotic dancers, they were dancers from exotic countries.
Well, they were exotic countries and...
Well, you know, we're going up there for a minute.
Well, you know, when you're front America, you know, you, you just look across the oceans and say, gee, that's a wonderful land. It's very exotic. But...
Well, since it's going to be at the high school, I thought we ought to...
The high school put on a great program last year, and, and these dancers were great.
Okay, thank you.
Al, is that going to be...
They were really good, really good.
Is it going to be held in the gymnasium at the old high school?
I'm going to, helping everywhere. I'm going to try...
All over the school?
I'm going to be walking around, trying to do it. If someone has an opportunity, I'm going to help them. And if they don't, I'm going to say, "Great job." So I'll be walking around, doing stuff, and helping out everywhere I can. This year is sponsored mostly by the Character Coalition in Galt, and they've done a lot of work on it. And it's, it's really a positive thing for Galt. So I, I think you'll, you'll get a lot out of it. You just can't miss this one. So I think you're going to really like it, yeah.
All right, looking forward to it, Al.
Yeah, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jimenez? Dan Jimenez?
Danny Jimenez, and I live in the city. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Slatterback was saying about the water report to the SAC regional report for Mr. Slinkard, and that four thousand nine hundred dollars was paid for that, for that report. Now, my question is, is somebody going to answer that question for him? Or is it just going to be glossed over? I mean, it's a legitimate question. Why is the city paying for a report from somebody if it's the same Jerry Slinkard? He doesn't need to live in this town. So why is money being moved to pay that from one fund?
Well, I can answer it in part, I think, Mr. Jimenez.
Okay.
We had a presentation given to us by Mr. Slinkard that was taken at face value, I think, by the council. We needed to investigate whether what he said was true because it could potentially save the city of Galt money. And it, in, in the end, it turned out to be not exactly what we were presented with, and it cost us forty-five hundred dollars to come to that conclusion. And it's unfortunate. If the document had been accurately put together in the first place, we wouldn't have had to do it. But if there's an opportunity to save the community money, I think it was a small investment. So if Mr. Slinkard's information had been correct, it would have been a smart investment on our behalf. Now, it turns out it wasn't correct, so we lost.
Okay, so it still costs the city to, to find out if his request was, or his presentation was valid or not, then. Still many wasted.
I think Ted's chomping at the bit over here.
Just some factual information, not for discussion. The council directed staff to do the evaluation, to spend the money to get the answer. And I don't know what fund Mr. Slatterback's talking about, about commingling, but in the special meeting, Greg did come back and ask to combine two funds. They may be a developer, they may be a, a non-developer, because they were spending the money on the, on something that was required by both of them to, to pay for. It was in the staff report, and if you'd read the staff report, it would have clarified it. If Greg comes back and you want to ask him additional questions, he's on vacation, he'd be more than happy to, to respond to that. But the answers were in the staff report.
Also, maybe we can make sure that John Slatterback and Dan, that you get copies of that report if, maybe they can contact you, Ted.
Another question I have really quickly is, if, why wasn't he billed for this if his data was all wrong and we had to...
The council asked the staff to pay to do the evaluation, that's why.
Okay.
I'll give you an example on the opposite side. We did a study with the wastewater treatment plant to determine if we might be able to change the direction that we were going in with the upgrade. And in that, in that instance, our investment paid off with a significant cut to the amount of work that we needed to do at the wastewater treatment plant. So I think whenever there's opportunities like that to save money, we evaluate whether or not it's worth making a small expenditure to, to reach a final conclusion.
Okay, well, great. I like the answer because when John left, you know, it wasn't clear. So this, you know, clarifies his question that he had.
The reason for it, Mr. Jimenez, is because Greg is the one that should answer, and he's not available. So what we would have done is told him to come back and, and do the answer. His answer will be more complete than mine, but I remember the issue and what took place in council.
Okay, well, thank you. Just one more, a quick comment. Mr. Baldwin said that he's never seen any corruption or anything in this town. Well, I haven't either, but boy, if you look at track records of politicians, you might want to change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Information consent calendar. Liz, if I could ask you to read, we have eight of them.
Okay, number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of August eighteenth, two thousand nine. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, a street closure for Liberty Ranch High School Parade. Number four, contract for construction inspection services. Number five, a ward of bid for the construction of Sidewalk ADA Improvements, two thousand nine project. Number six, Central Vault Interchange Acquisition for purchase of real property and easements. Number seven, treasurer's report for period ending July two thousand nine. And number eight, appropriation of grant funding for enhanced safety lighting.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? No? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, vote. Next item, we don't have any presentations. Do we have any communications tonight? Yes.
Couple of quick, under communications, I had a meeting with the outreach coordinator for the high-speed rail, and I'll be bringing you some more information, but there's going to be some scoping meetings for this region. It's going to happen all over the state. Our scoping meetings will be in October, tentatively like mid-October. As soon as I have firm dates, I'll let you know. And this individual, whose name, just so you know, is Gene Endicott. He's offered, as this moves along, if we want him to come here and kind of update us, he'd be glad to do that. Probably be better after the scoping meetings than before. We're not at the point so much where they're doing exact specifics, more broad brush, but I hope by now many people know, A, we approved a bond in the state to begin moving this forward, and B, it may run right through the center of our town. And I'm meeting with an individual on Friday, so if he's watching at home or listening, I'll, I'll update you, him, on that, because I know he's interested in that. Pag to that, I spoke with the rail committee also at Secog, and we're still trying to get the event I mentioned that our mayor and the other mayors will be invited to. So I'll keep you updated that, and I'll get you copies of this or leave this for everybody to look at. The other one is, under communications, I think we've probably all gotten some communications about the rebirth of the peripheral canal discussion. I'd be interested in if the council's interested in putting that on a future agenda, another, you know, couple of weeks or month or whatever. But it's becoming pretty active, and it's actually the first political action thing I ever did. I was representative of the Sierra Club in nineteen sixty-nine, opposing its being built back then, and it's back again. So if council's interested, by nod of heads, I guess, or something, I'll just ask, gets on, and we can talk about it further.
I'd be interested in seeing it.
I would, too.
And I think peripheral canal on that note, I think, if I remember correctly, two football fields wide, about forty miles long.
A lot of water going south.
That's right.
And then, under communications... And then, under communications, uh, if you haven't seen this, I will leave this for everyone to see, but recent edition of the Business Journal Sacramento featured our own, Paula, and a very nice article. Congratulations to you. And anyone who hasn't seen it, I'll leave that and circulate it as well. And it, uh, not just only touches on the work she's doing here, quite frankly, touches on the work she's doing for a much broader group of people. And I was interested in some of the things we wouldn't know about you, and so, nice to learn those too. So, uh, congratulations. That's a very, very nice article for you and our community. Okay, that's it?
Okay, well, we have scheduled matters, ordinances, regular calendar. And then, what our next item would be, community development department?
I too, oh. Under regular calendar.
Pardon?
I too, under regular calendar.
Property abatement supplemental report, Mr. Campion.
Uh, yes. This item, uh, the council discussed at the last meeting, um, Slatterback reported um, regarding vacant abandoned properties in the city, and we had made a, a request for approximately twenty thousand dollars to undertake abatements, uh, throughout the city over the course of probably the next year. Uh, there were some reservations expressed by council, I think possibly, uh, by the amount of money, uh, the scope of the work. There was a question as it related to prevailing wage. And then there was a concern about cost recovery on those items, or on those properties, uh, that were vacant and boarded. Um, staff did a little bit of additional research, and, and, um, that was the purpose of this report. Um, one, um, the, the question is it relates to prevailing wage. It would be subject to prevailing wage if any one of the work efforts was in excess of one thousand dollars. Uh, to address that concern, what we're recommending, at least in this report, if the council desires to, to go forward, is that we simply allocate those funds to the Parks and Rec Department, and, uh, Voice then would have half-staff, full-time and part-time, to undertake that work effort, and we've allocated monies for materials in the event that there are materials necessary for, uh, the abatement. Um, secondly, uh, we reduced the amount of money, uh, to fifty-five hundred dollars, and I did that after consulting with Voice, to determine what would be an appropriate amount, assuming we had, you know, maybe five or six properties that, that, that needed, needed work. Um, and it may be more. Um, the, uh, the, the, the scope would also change to the extent that we would only look at serious health and safety issues, where you have, uh, say, rear, I use an example, is rear yards that are open, fences are down, and you have a pool in the rear yard. Uh, or you have, uh, weeds of sufficient height and bulk is, that it would be determined by the, uh, fire marshal as to a, uh, significant fire hazard. Uh, there are other cases and instances that, that may occur that are not identified in the report. Those would be up to the determination of the city manager as to whether they are considered to be serious health and safety risks. Um, the, um, this report does not diminish code enforcement's, um, current efforts in posting properties. I mean, if, if there's a vacant property that needs to be posted, they're still being posted. So, that, this would be in addition to, and just provide us additional mechanisms to address very, uh, problematic properties that create health and safety issue for a neighborhood or the community. So, it doesn't affect the ongoing operation. I think there's a question as to that. Um, in discussions with the mayor, um, I handed out, um, the, a section of the municipal code as it relates to the lien procedures. Um, the, the lien procedures under section twenty-one of the municipal code are referenced, uh, from your chapter eight that deal with vacant and, vacant and, uh, boarded buildings. Uh, this is the procedure that's recommended. Uh, you'll note that, that it sets out, you know, the minimum re- in, in required posting periods. It has to be noticed in the paper before the lien can be placed, um, and it goes through the entire process. So, there, there is a mechanism in place. Staff would certainly, uh, pursue cost recovery on, on any property where we had, uh, to put work effort on private property. So, hopefully that, that provides that, excuse me.
I was waiting for you to get through.
I'm done.
Uh, and that's where we move into the special assessment procedures, from there, right?
Um, I believe so.
This is the lien procedures, and then we go over...
Well, the, the lien would be recoverable, a- as they point out under that section.
Okay.
Uh, either through direct payment, or if there's a transfer, uh, or collected as part of the property taxes.
Okay.
So, that, that, that would be the principal method, um, where we would hope to recover those costs.
Okay.
So, so staff, uh, simply brings it back for council consideration and direction.
Okay, any questions from other council members?
Have a question.
Sure.
Um, one of the things I was concerned about was, in the report, it says, "By narrowing the enforcement actions to be undertaken by the city," but what I'm hearing you say is, you're not really narrowing the enforcement. You're, you're enhancing, or you're...
Well, wh- wh- if, i- in comparison to, to last week's report, we were identifying a broader scope of, of properties. You know, they wouldn't necessarily have health and safety issues, but they could be problem, uh, properties that are, you know, we, we've gotten a number of notices. We've got high weeds, maybe it's not a true health and safety issue, but we would have been able to abate those. That was the scope there. So, the, the, by narrowing it, now we're just dealing with those that we believe are going to create a health and safety, uh, issue associated with that neighborhood.
Okay, let me ask you simply, the abandoned homes.
Yes.
Where the, uh, lawns are twelve inches high, maybe that's not necessarily a health issue. Are we not, uh, gonna do anything about that?
Yeah, those are...
Are we doing a lien?
Those are all being posted. They are, and they are sending out notices to the properties, property owners for abatement purposes. Um, but it, the, one of the problems that we run into is finding who is the property owner.
That's always been a problem.
Yeah, if we have a real estate sign out front, or someone knows who owns it, then we follow up on it that way. And generally, we have a success in terms of getting properties cleaned up. But it's those where there are no real estate signs out front, and you've simply got...
So, you're doing nothing about those?
We, we have no resources to do anything. We go as far as we can through the process, but if you cannot find that owner, there's not much you can do.
There's probably a way to find the owner from the tax...
It, it is extremely difficult. It is extremely difficult. You spend, you can spend hours and hours getting transferred around, you know, from one mortgage company or to a bank or to, to another person. You get disconnected. Uh, I know the police department has spent six to eight hours on a single piece of property and still not be able to find out who the owner is.
So, I thought we had an ordinance that addressed that. But we're not gonna be able to do it 'cause we don't have the funding? Is that what you were saying? 'Cause that's always been a problem, finding who the owner is.
Not, not in all cases.
That's true, but there are some, in the beginning, it was really difficult to find out.
It is still difficult.
Which bank still owns the property.
It is still difficult. It is still difficult if there is no real estate sign or anything on the property that would give us a lead as to which, where, where to go with the property owner. A lot of times, if there's been no change, you check county records, it is the property owner who left, and that's where the trail ends, you know?
But then with, in that case, we will do nothing?
We, we don't have a choice. That's correct.
Wow.
Under, well, we have, we have no funds to do that either. That's the other thing. There are no funds budgeted to abate those properties.
Okay, so, do we have an ordinance that we can't enforce? Is that where we're at?
Well, we don't have an obligation to go on private property. It is the property owner's responsibility to abate. What we are doing and what we are proposing is, in those cases where we feel that it's necessary that it be addressed, that is what is before you tonight.
Five thousand dollars.
That's correct.
The nuisance ordinance, wouldn't that what it was called, where we had the, um, abandoned homes?
That's chapter eight. That's the, the vacant buildings and vacant and boarded buildings.
Well, I think, uh, Councilor, I mean, the issue isn't whether we have the right to go on the properties and do it. The issue right now is whether we have the funds available to abate those properties. And what's being proposed tonight is only those most serious properties. But what was proposed two weeks ago was a broader scope, which would have addressed more of the just lighted properties. It's really council's discretion, or whether they, how aggressive they wanna be at abating properties.
Well, and then the second question, you know, first of all, I, we had this problem, and I thought we had addressed it, and now it seems like we're backfiring. But the other concern I had, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Haynes. I'm a little concerned about Parks and Recs being able to handle it. Um, because I know you've taken on some of the work of our, our landscaping contractors. To save us money, you've taken on some of that. Are you gonna be able to, and to what extent to...
Excuse me, it doesn't, it doesn't say in the staff report, but actually, I was gonna assign this. If you look at the funding sources, it's two one four nine, which is market staff. Uh, I didn't wanna commit, because as you were saying, that we are assuming additional landscaping from the, uh, current contract. So, I discussed it with Armando Solis, and he feels confidence, confident that, uh, he could utilize his part-sti- uh, part-time staff to address these houses that we, we had addressed.
I will yield to you then.
Mayor, is okay with speaking next? You all right?
Yeah, please.
Um, actually, one of my questions was the impact on Parks and Recs. Uh, it sounds like you answered, 'cause we don't have the part-time help that we once had, so we're not, we don't have that flexibility anymore, right?
Well, that, that's correct, and as I was saying, is I didn't, the funding of, if it is approved by council this evening, the funding goes specifically to market part-time staff, and Armando. And, and, and the key is, as I was telling Kurt, is as long as I don't have a, a laundry list, you know, if we just address, you know, uh, a one, two, or whatever, don't give me like, you know, twenty houses to address, I think we'd be able to handle that.
Okay. Uh, Kurt, question, uh, is that, in a situation that I know it's very difficult, because the loans are turned over so many times from one lender to the next, it's difficult to identify or pin down the right one. But on that note, of these, uh, problems of these, uh, homes, we're still putting notices on the doors, are we not?
Right.
So, whoever the owner is, at some point in time, somebody should come out, the banks should come out and evaluate the, the, the condition of these properties on a, uh, on a fairly regular basis. And I know that because I spent eight and a half years in finance, and I had several foreclosures on a list that I had to be personally responsible for. And I promise you, I was out there almost every month, checking on those properties. They either had to be boarded up, or they had to be, uh, maintained in some way, shape, form, or another. But those people should know at some point in time, within a month or two, or at least three, that those notices are up there. And on those notices, are we putting the information for them? Do I, do they contact us?
Sure, yes, they are.
So, they should, so if they need a number or that, they know who to contact, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm not surprised that they're not contacting us. I, I just feel that through the process, the notices on the doors, that some of these lenders at some point in time should be, should come to their attention, but they're just simply choosing to ignore it. Okay.
Andrew, did you have comments?
Back to what we're, we're evaluating tonight. I'm glad that we've made some adjustments to the policy that we talked about, uh, at the last meeting. I do think it's important that we address the health and safety issues. I think that should be what we're focused on, and right now, that should be all we're focused on due to the, the funding issues that are taking place in this city and all across the country. So, I think we have an obligation, as the elected officials of this city, to do what is in the best interest of the health and safety of those that we represent. And I think that the proposal tonight addresses those concerns.
Okay, I have one last comment. Are we, uh, actively working with our local fire authority? You know, so that we can have maybe some type of joint effort, if we deemed properties or buildings that fall under this, uh...
We, we, we still are actively engaged in the task force, but those are on really a, kind of a separate, separate piece of property, or separate issues. Uh, that's between fire, police, and, and code enforcement. Uh, not to say that a property, uh, under this program wouldn't, couldn't also be addressed with the, uh, fire district. Um, to answer your question, yes, we're working with them. Um, not so much on the foreclosed homes, uh, but on the bigger picture. If we've identified, say, a vacant piece of property that, uh, needs to be abated in terms of tall weeds, uh, we work in conjunction with the fire district on those properties.
Okay. All right, any further comments or questions? Ted?
I think the council needs to be really clear that, number one, that this money is only gonna go on exceptions, not the general rule. We will follow the ordinance, we will try and get all the money back. We don't wanna spend money unless we absolutely have to, so these will be the exceptions. The other issue is, is that, um, Armando's people may not be instantly available. It has to be within a period of time, and they will have to work around the schedule. But it makes sense to use them, because we can save money and we can do more properties. And if we use three or four hundred bucks as an example per property, then that gives us, you know, fifteen or twenty that we can do. But these will be exceptions, not rules. What happens in the mortgage process is you can go down to county, and you can file a lien, but if it's gone through the bankruptcy process, those individuals that used to own the home don't own it. And what happens is, is these mortgages become in limbo, 'cause I've gone through it. And until they land somewhere, it, sometimes it's difficult to track down exactly who is absolutely responsible for it. Once somebody shows up, then we can go after them.
Will we be reimbursed, or...
Only, only if we can catch it into a process before it gets through the, the complete foreclosure process. 'Cause once it's through the complete foreclosure process, you're, you're, you can't do it. So, you have to put the lien on, and you have to get it either to the bank, or to the, to the, to the lender or somebody at the proper time. And what Kurt's saying, sometimes, these things are fluid and they're moving. Sometimes it's hard to tack down who's absolutely responsible for that property. Okay? But they're the exceptions that we're trying to do, not, not the general ones.
And I'd like to ask the city attorney, is there anything, uh, legally or illegally that, you know, going on private property? Is this gonna put us in, uh, any kinda issues?
Um, no, the city has the ability to go on the private property when there's an imminent threat to public health and safety.
I, I knew that. I wanted you to say it. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion on the floor? Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve and seconded. Any further discussion, then? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. So, we'll move to, actually, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. If I could have the roll call, please?
Board members, Haynes.
Here.
Claire.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
America.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
And we have... Consent agenda item, item, metric three.
Um, number one, minutes of the meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand nine. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending July two thousand nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve and seconded. Any further comments or questions? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, well, adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City Clerk's report?
Just a couple of items. Um, we were, I was asked to bring back the, uh, subscription, subscription, the membership for the National League of Cities, which is now due. Uh, the renewal for one year will cost the city fourteen hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That takes us through September thirtieth, two thousand ten. Um, at this point, I am looking for direction from the city council on, uh, approval for the membership for another year.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
Just, uh, one brief comment. Just wanted to say that the National League of Cities is the, uh, founding funder behind the, uh, discount prescription card program. And if we hold our membership from the National League of Cities, we would no longer be allowed to participate in the program. So, just want council to take that into consideration.
Okay, any other comments?
Just a quick question. Do you intend to still participate, or potentially participate, you know, if you make a commitment?
When, in the, uh, trip to DC?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I do.
Okay, and I'll support it.
Okay, no other comments? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
And seconded. No comment? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, just, I'd like to add a couple reminders. The Parks and Recreation Commission will have a special meeting here in the council chambers at seven PM tomorrow night. Um, the city offices will be closed on Monday, September seventh, in honor of Labor Day. Uh, the Galt City Council Youth Committee that was supposed to be on September seventh has been canceled. Um, noteworthy, there, well, the city offices are closed Wednesday, September ninth, in honor of the State Admissions Day. So, we'll have signs posted, although that's kind of unusual for the city to be closed, but, uh, it's one of our holidays. September ninth, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting will be canceled. Um, the Planning Commission meeting will be held September tenth in the council chambers at six thirty. The Galt City Council Youth Committee will have a special meeting on September fourteenth at six PM in the City Hall Community Room, which takes us to our next city council meeting. One other item to put on your calendars, October seventeenth will be our Household Hazardous Waste and Shred It event on the market grounds. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments by Vice Mayor Payne? I'm sorry, staff? Sorry? I apologize.
Um, we're contacted by Senator Cox's office a couple weeks ago about setting up a meeting to meet with staff, as well as potentially a couple council members, if there's interest to talk about issues that we might have. The date that the senator is available, September seventeenth, at nine thirty, uh, between about nine thirty and ten thirty, as you know, the senator's busy, and that was the best time that he could come up with. So, um, we are planning on attending as, as staff. We're developing a list right now internally of, of issues and things that we wanna bring to his attention, and wanted to ma, have an open invitation for two council members to potentially attend that meeting on the seventeenth. So I'll turn it over to the council, if there's interest in anyone attending. It is on the seventeenth, uh, at nine thirty here at City Hall.
I've got to have quite a bit of time with him in the past, so I'll let someone else, if they're available, go.
I think I'd be interested. I'd like to sit in.
You're all welcome.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I assume?
I would, but I mean, if one of the other council members would like to do it, then I'll let Don and someone else, 'cause I can meet with them at another time.
Uh, Don?
Mr. Cox. Okay. I have to. Okay. Barbara, did you wanna meet or?
I have another obligation.
Oh, okay.
So, Randy and Don?
Don and I'll meet at nine thirty on the seventeenth.
Nine thirty on the seventeenth?
Here.
Yep. There at City Hall.
While you're with him, we haven't, I don't think, offered this for a while to both he and our newly-elected, uh, Guy Houston's done it in the past, and others. If they wanna have meetings with our public in the, in our area, in other words, if their staff or the elected wanna come here, uh, either for a town hall type or just office hours, might be something to bring up again.
Okay. We'll bring it, we'll mention it, John.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. No other reports from staff? None. Okay. Council comments? Vice Mayor Payne?
Uh, Sacramento Transportation Authority have reevaluated their forecast of revenue down. So they've, um, forecasted for the fiscal year twenty, or two thousand nine, ten, um, it's down three percent. And we were going to get for that year, um, nine hundred and twenty thousand. As it is now, we will lose twenty-two thousand, and so we should be getting, um, in, or it's budgeted, uh, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Uh, also, one of the things that we had done was gone out and borrowed money against what we believed, uh, we would be getting in taxes. And so we've gone through a refinancing plan, and this is available for anyone that wants to study it. Uh, I'll leave it with the city clerk. Uh, it tells about how we're going to, uh, refinance. We're looking at, even looking at it weekly because of the rate changes. So, anybody want some good reading, this is available with the city clerk's office. Um, let's see, what else? I wanted to really, um, stay to Public Works. I'm so excited about the work that you're doing, um, with ADA, as well as, uh, your transportation director has been able to work with the county and come up with a program, uh, for group rates on our buses. That was hitting our senior citizens very hard, to have to go from seventy-five cents for a fixed route to two dollars and fifty cents for a dial-a-ride, uh, each way. And so we talked to, um, Don Matoli, and he did some talking, and so now, we're able, if you have five, uh, people, it doesn't have to be seniors, that are being picked up at one particular location and going to one location, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, then they can have seventy-five cents off of each individual fare. So, um, thought that was a great accomplishment, and I'm always excited to see what we're doing with the work for the ADA. Um, I just think you need to be recognized, you're working so hard and doing a great job. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, this weekend, and I'm not sure if it's Saturday or Sunday, will be the memorial service for Paul Hagan and his wife, Edie. Uh, Paul is one of the pioneers of Galt. He was very active in restoring the Ray House, um, and until he passed away, he stayed active. Where Galt is today is partially, um, because of his efforts that he gave back to the community. So, uh, the memorial service will be at the Shepherd of the Valley Lutheran Church. Um, I think, to get the exact, uh, time and everything?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock on Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay, there you have it. So, uh, we owe them, uh, a lot of appreciation. Uh, let me see if there's anything else? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Claire?
A couple things. I'll be meeting tomorrow with the folks working on selection of the new high school superintendent. Um, they're meeting with a variety of people in the community and working on that process. So I'll be glad to participate in that. Um, we had both our air district meeting and Secog meeting last month. And, uh, in particular, from the Secog side, the good news is, uh, Secog and transportation projects in our region continue to benefit from the federal stimulus dollars, and they're continuing to come in and get allocated out. Uh, there was an article in Sacramento Bee, I think, appeared over the weekend, talked about some of the projects, depending on if they can be completed in time or not. And if they aren't, Secog has a backup list of where those funds will go for other projects that are, as they call, shovel-ready to go. Um, the House took action on the National Transportation Bill and the Urban Bill. Um, the Senate's done some things, but, uh, there is no final motion on a true reauthorization for transportation, which is critical to the whole country, at least of all us. Um, the word I'm getting from people, unfortunately, is that, um, it looks like they're gonna probably put it off till the, after the two thousand ten elections. So, that's just rumor on the street in Washington DC when they took the August. I personally think that's not gonna be best for some of the projects that are trying to get moved forward, but we'll just see what happens. Um, but there will, there is already the need for a complete rewrite and reauthorization bill for transportation throughout the United States, and it will get addressed, but it's looking like two thousand eleven spring. So we'll keep pushing for both our own cities' issues, as well as the regions, as that moves forward. So I'll keep you up to date on that. Um, and leading up to tonight, and, and we saw a little of tonight, that there continues to be some high emotions throughout our community on various things. Um, Delta Green certainly being one of those. And, um, I've already made some phone calls to some folks. Some of you have already heard from me, gonna be making some other phone calls. Uh, I'm going to be trying to ask some people to, um, look at approaching that matter in particular, and things surrounding it in general, in more of a constructive manner than what I viewed to be somewhat of a destructive manner. Um, so towards that end, I'm, I'm taking some actions, uh, as I say, I've let some people know what I'm hoping we can achieve, and asking some people to consider cooperating in that. Um, two things that I intend to do in the, in the near term. Um, one is to ask this council, and to make clear to some people who are still rightfully very concerned about the sphere and the general plan, and, and, and I, I've tried to be as clear as I know how to be, but apparently, there's still people who don't seem to know where I guess I am on this issue. So here, here's where I am, and here's what I'm asking. At the last meeting, Councilmember Haynes and the mayor both made motions that I supported them both, and I explained at the time that I don't think the two are somehow not both possible. Donald, uh, suggested that we approve the sphere of influence, and he just wanted to do it longer into the future than I thought was even legal, or quite frankly, that I necessarily supported. The mayor wanted to get more information. What I support, and have said all along, is that I do not support changing the LAFCO application we have or the sphere of influence. So I supported most of what Don does, and I hope we can come back and maybe make that clear, that that will be allowed to be completed without interruption. I also support what the mayor's doing, and I've seen a pass-through menu memo, we're still gonna get additional information, sounds like, out into October. Because all these accusations people like to make of all these secret things going on, so I'll announce very publicly, I'm going to be meeting with people who are in favor of the Delta Greens project tomorrow. I have not met with them in months because of all the innuendo that if you even meet with anyone, somehow you're corrupt, I guess, is what some people like to call it, which I find ludicrous. Our job up here is to listen to the people of our community. So, there's no mystery to anyone, I'll be meeting with them tomorrow. Council has suggested we not meet with people without staff present. I've asked Jason to be present, so that whatever I say, there's someone else there to hear it, so that that's clear. And what I'm going to ask those folks to do is that this is not the time for what they want to do, but I hope to lay out for them, or anyone else who wants to approach the city, what the path would be. I would like the council to be prepared to meet with people who want to approach our city, whatever it could be. We, we get approached throughout the years for people who want to do things in and around our city. And there is no project on the table, which I've told the press repeatedly, I can't tell you how many times I've been called, and, "Do you support this project?" I said, "Do you have a copy of the project?" "'Cause I haven't seen one." I said, "I don't know if I support it or not. If one comes forward, I'll take a look at it." But if it does, I think there ought to be a process in place. They ought to pay the cost, to have it looked at, all the things we've talked about. And I would propose that perhaps the mayor and Don, or me and Don, whatever, there'd be a subcommittee to work on those, and, and the staff is the core of it. I would ask that the council, once there's a proposal coming to us, we agree. We don't meet with them, the term I think is ex parte, in other words, by ourselves, that we just cease those communications. It seems to create distrust within ourselves and within the community. So, there's a variety of things. I'm gonna try and see what people are comfortable with. Tonight's not the night to work it all out, 'cause it's not even on the agenda. But I'm gonna start working in this area. I fear, and I'm concerned for our community, that a small number of people have gotten so wound up in things they're doing, as well-meaning as they are on both sides of the issues, it's becoming more destructive than constructive. And to someone on the outside, and I worked in business development a long time, and one of the main reasons I ever got up on this council was to try and promote our community to the businesses that might come here, and the jobs, and in the region, we're not putting our best foot forward. I've contacted one of the forums, I'm gonna contact one of the others. I'm not asking to exclude anything, I'm not asking that you don't criticize. I'm asking on a voluntary basis that some of the really tasteless, quite frankly, things that I've heard and seen, that people reconsider if that's the best way to push their ideas within our community. You can do anything you want. I carry with me, in three different briefcases everywhere I go, a copy of the Constitution, and I've got one up here in my papers that I bring with me each night. But nowhere in here does it say you have to be so mean and leave such a scorched earth behind you, that there's no opportunity to work with anyone of a different view later on. And, and that's where I see our community going, and it disheartens me, and I'm gonna see if I can do something to help turn it around. So, just know that's kinda some of the things I'm gonna be throwing out there, and I'll bring it back for more discussion at another time. But I'm hoping we can do these in a more constructive manner, and I hope we can get our LAFCO sphere of influence and general plan adopted that I know as a citizen, I started working on in nineteen ninety-eight, so that's eleven years ago. And we all know the time and money, everybody up here, the staff and the community has worked on it. And I think that needs to be our focus to move this community forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Haynes?
Yeah, Daryl, just on that note, I appreciate what you've said, 'cause I, I have to agree with you. Uh, and you're right, my motion before was, is that we would move forward with making no change to the current, uh, submitted application for the sphere of influence and general plan. And that's all I was saying. And on a side note, that's not to say that somebody can't come back and request an amendment. I can't stop anybody from doing that, that's, you know, and I, and that, that's a decision that will have to be made when that time comes. So, if I understood you correctly, that's, that's what you would support.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. Um, I like the fact that you're reaching out to the groups and trying to get them to understand that the, the message that it's, that they're coming up here with again and again, it isn't benefiting anybody. And I think it's important to, that not just you say it, but I'm also here to say it, that I think that the community is, we're losing as a whole. Every time somebody comes up here with their messages, and regardless of who it is, uh, and they rant and they rave, or they make accusations of whether it be corruption, or whatever the case may be, uh, nine times out of ten, or ninety, in this case, ninety-nine percent of the time, uh, there's no merit to the statements that being made, whether it be corruption or otherwise, uh, in my eyes. Um, I'd like to see us get past this. I think we're a better community than this, and I'd hate to see that somebody from the outside come in here and divide us up, and then, you know, when their projects either come or go, we're the ones left cleaning up the mess. And, uh, this is something I'd like to see behind us. I think we're better than that. Um, another thing is, another issue I'd like to discuss is our flea market. You know, earlier this year, Voice, we had made some changes, and we discussed, and you guys had, uh, made those changes to the flea market, right? I've been out there the last couple of weeks, I've been monitoring the numbers. What's that? Yeah, I've been out there, you're right, I've been out there, and I've been monitoring the numbers, and the numbers. And, and for you, for those of you who aren't familiar with what the flea market is, is that we had a little bit of a dip last year, kind of a drop in revenue when it came to it. And it's now picked up, and it's looking good. And I've been out there talking to some of our vendors, and I'm getting a lot of positive feedback, 'cause we had a lot of resistance to the changes that you were recommending. But now, a lot of them are coming around and saying they like the changes, they're all benefited from it. So, I wanna say, uh, kudos to you guys, just totally outstanding job. I've only heard good things about the changes you've made. People are pretty pleased with it, even in this economy. Uh, some of them feel like they're doing better as a result of your changes. So I'll already reach out and tell you and Armando and the rest of the staff, you've done an outstanding job there. Okay? Um, police report, I'm always, you know, talking about it constantly. Get out there, look at it, look at your area, take a look at the crimes that are being committed. You know, it's August, one of my biggest concerns this year was, is that we'd see a, a spike in, uh, crime. And, uh, I gotta tell you, our police department has just been so proactive and, and so active out there that we have not seen the impact of the increase in crime that some other communities have seen. We have been very, very fortunate, and they've done an outstanding job of keeping those numbers down, and, and again, being proactive on that. And I'm very pleased, and again, there's another department that deserves a, a kudos as well. Um, I'm looking forward to the, uh, seventeenth, uh, meeting with, uh, um, Mr. Cox. I've been wanting to reach out and be a little bit more regionally involved, and it's been recommended that I do it by, uh, by citizens, and I've been working in that direction. So I just want you to know that that's, that's what my intentions are. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to touch on, on Daryl's comments. I think the five of us sitting up here, I think we're all probably guilty in the last nine months of letting just a few petty issues dictate the direction that we move forward, and dictate our own relationships with each other. And, uh, you know, it's unfortunate, and hopefully, we can move forward in a different light. There's so much suffering taking place in this community right now, and it seems like we've let a few issues just blind us to what's going on in the community. Um, so many families are losing their homes, people are struggling to pay the bills, and we, we've let ourselves get caught up in, in arguing about just a, a few things. And the, the reason that I'm making, making this statement, Councilman Haynes and I have been talking over the last couple of months about putting together a six-month program here in the community to, uh, to get help out to those that are in need in the community. And we were gonna launch this program starting in the beginning of October. We're gonna launch it with a town hall meeting that we're co-hosting called What to Do When the Paycheck Stops. This is a, uh, this would be an event, to give you an example, I, I watched this take place at our union hall. We brought in a, a representative from the Operating Engineers Credit Union, who gave a presentation to the members that were out of work on how to deal with their creditors, how to deal with their banks, how to keep food on the table for the family when they're not seeing that regular source of income. The Operating Engineers Credit Union represents, the Operating Engineers represents our employees here in the city of Galt, and they're gonna be willing to come out and host this event, with Councilman Haynes and myself. So it will be a, a forum for those in the community that are suffering, don't know how to deal with their banks, don't know how to keep the electricity turned on. It's a way for them to connect to those services. We've also got commitments from some, some prospective employers to distribute information at this event, to help connect, uh, people in this community that are, that are unemployed and are looking for work with some reasonable sources of income. So at the next meeting, which I believe is the fifteenth, we'll have a firm date. We're trying to make something work so that we can get as many prospective employers there as possible. So, uh, we'll have the exact date and time at that meeting, and we'll also have literature to distribute to the rest of the council to let them know when and where it's gonna take place. Uh, over the last couple of weeks, had a couple of events that came up. Last Thursday, I was at the Capitol, had the opportunity to meet with, uh, a lot of our local representatives, including those that, that don't directly represent the city of Galt. I was there to talk about Senate Bill fourteen, which is, uh- I was there to talk about Senate Bill fourteen, which is, uh, currently being considered. What it would do, um, there's currently a mandate that by two thousand and ten, utilities in California would have to meet a renewable energy portfolio guideline of twenty percent. This new bill, Senate Bill fourteen, would in, would move that mandate out to two thousand and twelve to give utilities more time to comply, but it would tack on an additional requirement that by twenty, that by two thousand and twenty, there would be thirty-three percent of in, of utility companies' portfolios based on renewable resources. Uh, Senate Bill fourteen, there's actually two bills that are going through the Assembly and the Senate right now, that kind of try to accomplish the same thing. I think the other one is Assembly Bill sixty-four. The difference between the two is that Senate Bill fourteen has stipulations that require all of the renewable energy generating resources to be developed in California, which, which means more jobs for the, uh, the citizens of, of California. Uh, pretty fruitful discussions, I think. One way or the other, a lot of the principles of both of those bills are gonna be brought forward. It'll probably be a combined effort between, uh, both authors to come for, come up with a compromise, but I, I think we'll see that passed before the session is over. Uh, on Monday, we attend, actually on Friday, I attended a Business Journal event sponsored by the Sacramento Business Journal on renewable energy. Um, there was a lot of discussion, Paula, about you, when people found out that I was a representative from the city of Galt. But, uh, it was just a great event. I had an opportunity there to meet with Ma- with Nancy Bowie, talk about, uh, some of the rate changes that SMUD's going through, and just the renewable energy efforts as a whole, so, pretty fruitful discussions on that end, too, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Daryl, I guess you, you had one more comment?
I did.
What was that? You did. Sorry.
Did I forget?
No, you didn't.
Oh. 'Cause I have one more comment, so I did say what it is.
Okay.
Have I forgotten? You can tell me.
No, no, I asked you, I thought, I thought you looked at me and I said, "Do you have another comment?"
Oh.
I thought you put up your finger one.
I bet.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Well, hey, I appreciate all the comments. You know, um, this is a good feeling for me, because, you know, it sounds like what all of us council members are trying to do is just, you know, to make positive moves in the right direction. I appreciate all your comments tonight, so. Doesn't mean, as Daryl, you said, we're gonna agree with everything, you know, Don and Daryl and Barbara, but, uh, appreciate everyone showing up tonight, you know, bearing with us. Uh, we have a couple of items that we need to reconvene back into closed session, so, we will see you. Thanks. If you wanna wait for the comments a little later, fine.
Why, thank you, Barbara.